Eight, Council Ferguson will move quorum, he'll step in when he can. So I'll ask for an adoption and receipt of the agenda items. A motion.
So moved.
Uh, is Counselor Davis moved? Is there a seconder?
Second.
Co- Counsel Arneson, um, all those in favor? And any opposed? Seeing none, it's carried, thank you. Uh, we have a presentation from, uh, staff continuing the, uh, twenty twenty-one draft, uh, operating budget. And, uh, at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Backen.
Uh, thank you, your worship. This is really a continuation of our previous journey in, in terms of budget twenty twenty-one. Today's, um, overview is relatively short, um, and it's intended simply to attempt to elicit some sort of, uh, some form of direction, I guess, as we head into the Macintosh session next week, which will set our priorities, or help us establish some priorities and then follow that up with an additional budget session where we can begin. We think following that, uh, begin to define what the budget's going to look like. Uh, so today, there's really only three slides, um, uh. Sandra will begin with the, uh, the first slide, uh, then we will uh, kind of do a tandem on the second slide and I'll try to provide more description on the third slide. Uh, again, we're being very cautious in this approach as we're simply trying to define the issues and some of the overarching things that we're finding is that as time is going on, we're getting better, uh, I guess, quality information, better numbers coming out of twenty twenty. Again, we're still, uh, still nowhere close to closing off twenty twenty, but we're seeing a bit for information that helps us do some projections. We're able therefore to refine the direction we're going in. But we will have some questions in terms of councils, uh, I, I guess, uh, uh, sense of, uh, whether it's prudent to start looking at some other options that will be covered off in slide two. And we've attempted to eliminate some things that we think that council has indicated generally are not, not ways to look at, but I'll let Sandra kick it off and then we will, uh, respond, uh, uh, to the, uh, questions of council at the end.
A point of or, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor, Counselor Richter, yes, I see your hand.
Yeah, um, I'm just wondering, we have, of course, the, uh, preliminary operating budget, universal services document from December fourteenth. There's also a document, item one, and items distributed. Uh, could staff please clarify which document we're working from right now?
Backen.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Today's presentation's going to be on the document in the distribution list. It serves as a refinement of the previous document. So as we begin to advance things, we're progressing further down the, down the, the path and the numbers you have now before you in today's presentation are the most up to date, so it will supersede the previous document.
Okay, so we're in the items distributed, item one right now. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, and which items, we have so many here, please, which, which items?
It's the, um, di- distribution, uh, January seventh, uh, pertaining to Monday, January eleventh, and it's item number one on the distribution list, um, January seventh.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so staff can, uh, carry on, thank you.
Which is all cited. So, over to Sandra.
Okay. Your worship, the members of council, thank you very much. Um, so we have refined the, um, calculations for the budget at this point. We're now starting with a six point seven one percent uh, increase, and that includes all discretionary and non-discretionary items. Um, similar to the prior one, we then add in the open recreation center COVID, um, increases. This was two point three four and is now one point seven five percent. Um, there will be some further information on this on slide three. And the recreation center, um, remaining recreation center revenue and cost reductions was previously at two point six eight and we now reduce that to two point three five percent. Our growth was reforecast. We did get our numbers from B C assessment last week, so we had it at one point five three prior to this, and now we're at one point seven per B C assessment. Uh, we also did some other deferments reductions, uh, which will be detailed in slide three, which gave us another one point three pers- one point oh three percent. And on top of that, we have the restart grant of five point four seven. That was similar to the prior presentations. So we are at four point one four at this point.
Miss, Ms. Ruff, could I, um, get some clarification on the growth reforecast? You, it shows point one seven, you said one point seven, is that a typo or is it point one seven? Just, if you just clarify that.
Sorry, uh, your worship, it's point one seven change from the previous, uh, point, we had, uh, one point five three projected, now it's.
Okay. So, so that's the difference?
Yes.
Uh, from the change, so it's still, okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Richter.
Just gotta get my mic on here. Yes, thank you very much. I have a couple of questions, a clarification on this particular slide. Starting with the first number, the six point seven one percent, does that include the six million dollars for the water treatment plants we just discussed? In, um, C P C?
The six million dollars is in the capital budget?
So there's no operating monies for those plants in this budget?
It's in the utilities.
Okay. And the bottom line there, the four point one four percent, is this the increase, the operate, is this the tax increase that staff are asking for? Four point one four percent? And if it is, I'd like to know what the cost of living is right now, or the consumer price index.
Uh, your worship, I'll, I'll jump in on that. This is, again, the, the balance refers to the need for additional revenue or cost reductions. So it's still a little premature to say it's staff's recommendation. Um, the, the easy answer would be that if there was a tax increase equating to something in that range, it would, uh, would balance it, but that's not all that we're looking at at this point. That's why we're calling it a balancing number and not yet a, uh, uh, recommendation. As well, in terms of the C P I, we have included some data that I'm gonna go by memory, but I think it's showing that for, uh, for, um, the C P I, it's around two percent, maybe two and a quarter, and that, uh, for municipalities, they're seeing their cost drivers pushing it more in the area of two and three quarters, uh, but that's something that I think we've have distributed or can distribute again in terms of the, uh, C P I. So it's, uh, again, still a, a work in progress as to the balancing number and trying to define what the C P I or M P I municipal price index will be for twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Backen. Mr. Mayor, I just wanna go on the record, there is no way I'm supporting a four percent tax increase in this year of COVID recovery.
Uh, thank you very much. I don't think we're here to make a decision today on four point one four. I think staff are really looking for direction uh, from council on which way to go, and I appreciate if, if four point one four is too high, then I think it's incumbent upon all of council to come up with some recommendations and suggestions to help, uh, defray that.
I think one percent is sufficient.
That, that, that's, that's fair. Um, I, I do see that when you combine just the recreation center, it's four point one five right there as a cost driver that, you know, it's COVID related. We did get some money back, but we have so many other expenses from, you know, really, from COVID that that restart grant isn't just about recreations, it's about a lot of our, uh, a lot of our operations. Just wanna point that out, but, uh, this is, this is a starting point and and, um, we, we are looking forward to some direction from, from council. Uh, so thank you. Counselor Kuntz.
Yeah, could, um, staff explain reduced by allowing staff to determine hours and adjust service levels? Just, uh, just what, what, I'd like a little better, um, definition of what that, what that means or what they did. Through your worship.
Your worship, I'll, I'll start off the discussion on this point and, uh, um, Ms. Blair, Mr. Stair may wanna jump in at some point, but what we've been focusing on is the, the strange, uh, I guess, twenty twenty we've had, where we saw revenues, uh, fall off the table for recreation culture and parks and expenses uh, follow, um, but it took some time thereafter, uh, just because of the commitments we have that we, uh, we're, we need to maintain in terms of our, our labor force. What, um, it refers to is the fact as we go forward, we're gonna see two things we, we think, we think we're going to see. We're not gonna see a return to previous activity or revenue levels automatically. It's gonna take some time. It's gonna take some time to, to ramp up. We also don't know what the long-term implications are going to be for that return and that there may be some, some clients that simply don't return at all because of the, the new world in terms of the, the pandemic and their, their feelings towards the use of services in, in the public realm. Uh, in any public facility, whether it's privately operated or, or whatnot, just dealing with the other, the other customers. So what we've tried to look at is, is there some ways that we can actually restore service levels, um, depending upon the the environment, the business case, and, and the classic example would be, well, if we are rather than open at, uh, at seven A M., perhaps we open at nine A M. because we know our marginal cost of operating is excessive in those couple of hours. And it should be reduced, uh, because, uh, it's, uh, it's not anywhere near, uh, meeting our, our variable operating costs. Those sorts of things. And when we apply that analysis, the business case analysis, the programs or to activities, we think we can actually begin to reinstate some of the, the centers to a grander level than we're at this point, but still perhaps not as the same level as we had before the pandemic began. So it's somewhat, um, difficult to define in terms of the specific susceptible impact because it's dependent upon the customer, consumer use of those, uh, services. And evaluating how that's going to look going forward, depending upon demand and, and the, and the business case, if you will, how close we can get to covering our variable costs, uh, through that process.
Okay, cause of course, in six months, that could, that number could change, I, obviously, but, um, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's correct. There could be a lot of variability. That's where there's gonna be the need to, to, to maintain the accuracy of the projection. There has to be the flexibility, which of course would be as soon as we can get to a point where the variable costs are covered and we're actually putting a, a return to those, uh, facilities. That means that we're actually being able to contribute back to our fixed costs we're gonna have anyways. That becomes a triggering event to expand some of your services and some of your, uh, you know, your, uh, uh, I guess, uh, practices.
Okay, thank you.
Good, uh, Counsel Long.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I just would like Mr. Backen, could he re- repeat the discussion he had on the C P I? I think I asked a couple of meetings ago and it was asked again today. It'd be really helpful to, to get a, a better handle on what the C P I is, and I heard him talk about the municipal C P I versus the regional one, perhaps. Can we just have a little more discussion or information, or maybe he can repeat for clarity? What is our C P I? What number can we use in the back of our minds when we consider this budget?
Uh, your worship, it's a, it's a great question. So beginning with the, the challenge of the C P I, the, the C P I, of course, refers to the consumers', uh, a price index and their, their ability to, uh, to, uh, purchase a certain bushel or basket of goods. For municipalities, it's not quite the same level of, uh, things that we're acquiring. Uh, we're not really acquiring, um, groceries or, or gasoline. Instead, it may be food services, it may be services, it may be diesel, it may be a whole sort of other things, concrete, um, those sorts of things that go through. And when we begin, uh, trying to determine our, our price index, if you will, we look to such things as what's our, our commitments to labor. So for example, we know going by memory that, uh, seventy to seventy-five percent of our actual, uh, costs are based on our labor costs, and we know our labor costs are going to increase pursuant to collective agreements, averaging about two percent per year. And we've seen some upward pressure, of course, in, in, in the last, uh, last quarter of two thousand and twenty. As we go forward then, uh, when we blend that with our, our price index needs for things like concrete, uh, uh, diesel fuel, those other, those other bushel or basket of goods, uh, heating and electricity, we find, we tend to find that doesn't reduce our overall, uh, price pressure. It tends to increase that price pressure. And the city of Edmonton did a study on that fairly recently where they outlined, uh, both the, uh, consumer price index and what they called the municipal price index. And that was as of two thousand and nineteen. And in one of our distribution lists, and I'll ask Wendy perhaps, so she can actually try to locate it. Um, we've actually included a fairly long paper from, um, uh, city of Edmonton that has that discussion and, uh, they're actually projecting in the medium term, uh, the municipal price index will probably begin to rise more in the nature of three percent, and that's just some, something we can look up as we go through it. So our built-in cost drivers then begin with those. And in addition, it also begins with any deficiencies or shortfalls we had for the previous year. In twenty, uh, twenty, we've worked quite diligently and we think we've been somewhat successful in that we're not going to have any, uh, I think, significant uh, overhang from twenty twenty. Uh, we think that through the cost management and the, some of the activities, um, staff and council have undertaken, we're in a pretty good position. But it's going to mean quite a challenge in twenty twenty-one because as was referenced in Sandra's first commentary, the, the thing that we're including in twenty twenty-one, again noting it's not twenty twenty, but twenty twenty-one, is the restart grant of five point four seven percent. We're not gonna have that in twenty twenty-two, um, but of course, as our revenues return and our, uh, we're able to manage some of the costs, uh, we hope to make that up as a, as a shortfall. So, um, what, uh, what, uh, that's our, our, one of our concerns is going forward, we're going to have to continue this process well into twenty twenty-two because of the cost pressures, as we're gonna largely see, uh, probably a three percent cost driver. And as we look in terms of what, uh, what we're experiencing, with the uncertainty of the recreation centers and the implications of that, it's gonna take some time to recover. And of course, uh, even, uh, some of the numbers you hear, see, uh, you see here reflecting the fact we are trying to open the rec centers in a progressive fashion. Now Wendy's found the reference in the distribution list, Wendy. I can't read across the table, so can you, uh, uh, give us the heads up in terms of where we find that?
Oh, I see it now. Yeah, it's, uh, item eight. Uh, on the, uh, January seventh.
That is correct. It was item eight of the distribution list that went out last Thursday, January seventh.
Thank you very much. So, so, so maybe I can continue then, your worship. So it would be safe to say that, you know, it was somewhere between two point three and, and three might be a number. I haven't, I, I'll go back and read the report from Edmonton, but, uh, somewhere in that two point whatever, two point five, six, or something like that would be potentially what we could say is a, is a, an average C P I for the region? I guess, thanks.
Yeah, Ms. Backen's just, uh, reading his notes, just give him a second.
Worship, I, I lost the page, but I, I think that's effectively correct. I recall from memory that it was, uh, probably in the two point five, two point seven five range, and I think Counselor Long has found it, and I'm just finding it again. Uh, it was a nice page summary.
Point eight eight, uh, two point eight seven, two point whatever.
Yeah, so we can, we can round that off, but it gives us an indication. It was, uh, page thirty-nine of their, um, their report that indicates, uh, looking at twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three, they're predicting three percent in twenty twenty, two point seven four percent in twenty twenty-one, two point seven seven in twenty twenty-two, and two point seven nine. We have an average of those out, but it gives you some context to the, to the different services and that, uh, are being purchased by municipalities and in particular, uh, when, when factors in that about seventy, seventy-five percent of what we're paying out is in wage costs and the contracts you're calling for, um, you know, on average, too, with some prediction that it may rise to two and a quarter, two point five going forward. It's gonna be very hard to reduce those numbers when the other basket of goods and services is, is in fact costing more than that, not less, as we've seen, uh, seen historically.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Counsel Richter.
Uh, yes, uh, just going back to that item eight on the items distributed that was referenced earlier. Uh, this is about the city of Edmonton's price index? Like, that's like comparing apples to oranges. Edmonton has a totally different, Alberta has a totally different economy because it's oil and gas-based than B C does. So I, I, when I saw this on the items distributed list, I'm going, why on earth are we looking at Edmonton's position? Like, what's that got to do with the tea in China?
Uh, thank you, your worship. It, it's, uh, provided to you because Edmonton has probably done the most, uh, detailed work on terms of this issue with the municipal price index and the C P I. And from our last, uh, council meeting, we, uh, were, uh, we sought to provide you some additional information. And it's quite true that the price indexes can vary by region. Edmonton does try to reflect a broader range. The challenge we face is with the Edmonton numbers because of the associated land costs and the increments we're seeing in the Fraser Valley and in B C in particular, our cost drivers might actually exceed that M P I in terms of what we're actually looking at. And because as those land prices, uh, land prices increase or those land costs increase for both landlords and tenants and homeowners and, and regional, uh, people, it means then that they have to recover those costs by passing those costs on through such, such thing as labor contracts or such thing as service contracts or even commodity prices. So it's true, it's not a, 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 um, a s- a completely solid mirror, but it does show some of the differences between uh, both the C P I and the M P I.
Well, I would suggest that Edmonton is not a good mirror for us to be looking into. I'm sorry, but I think we need a more realistic comparator.
Thank, thank you. So, um, we'll move on to the next slide. Thank you very much.
Your worship, I'll just, uh, start off and Sandra can, uh, begin. So this is, like, against some of the refining that we've been undertaking and it, uh, it helps because from our previous discussions, we think that the suggestion of levies or the use of differential mill rates or something, the council wasn't, uh, all that keen on, on seeing, and that certainly helps us, again, define the range of what, uh, what options we look at. That then brings us to some of the other categories that are there, such as deferrals, relocations, uh, reallocations, sorry, reductions, the use of reserves and surpluses and strategic borrowings. Our next slide will, will, I give you an example of some of the tinkering that we have done to, uh, to come down to that balancing number of the, uh, four point, uh, one four percent. And there may be some assumptions in that number that simply don't work for council at this point because of some of the commitments that we have, uh, which is, is totally understandable. And that's, in which case then there's perhaps other options on the remaining list that we can look at. So what I'm gonna suggest, uh, that we, uh, do subject to Sandra's comments on this slide is go to the notes and then return to this one as a bit of a focus, uh, for us to to look at going forward, uh, in terms of where we can begin to refine things further. But Sandra, any comments on, uh, on the, uh, the, uh, I guess, option slide?
Uh, no, uh, we have obviously done some, tried to implement some of those options, but we again need more direction.
So to kick it off then on, on this one then, what, uh, what we're looking at here is again some further refinements and, uh, one thing that we've been able to, to look at from our historical, uh, direction and resolutions is that the library levy, uh, by motion of council is intended to stand itself, so that gives us a bit of room in the general fund. We've, uh, Sandra's, uh, topped, uh, tipped off before, we've reduced some of the, uh, service level, uh, I guess, uh, uh, costs, uh, downwards, but we've also, uh, taken some estimates, uh, in terms of what some of the revenues are going to be, and that's resulted in the one point seven five and two point three five percent that she's talked about before as being, uh, drivers. We've talked about growth and we've looked at it and effectively we've moved the growth factor from one point five three to one point seven, uh, percent, and that gave us a uh, reduction of our previous numbers by a point one seven. But the point I think that's worthy of, of focusing on is, well, what could we do then to try to reduce some of the other numbers? Well, again, some of these things are things that may not be acceptable to council, but are things that we've started the process to look at, and one would be in in twenty twenty-one, not to seek three R C N P members, but instead to receive two R C N P members. And that gives us a bit of a saving. Um, some of the funding of the R C N P members has been from the R C N P reserves, so we have to take the fact that we are, um, not using that, uh, totally from operating, so that's as a, is effectively a reducing number. We've, uh, reduced our road paving increase from five hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, the C P O lease, we've been able to better refine that both in the terms of some of the operating costs, the fixed costs and some of the size of size of the facility itself and be able to show a reduction there. We've seen an increase, a projected increase in building permit revenue. We've looked back over the last few years and we've seen a steady increase in that. We think we can maintain that in twenty twenty-one, but again, after twenty twenty-two, when some of the, the deadlines for such things as D C C changes and whatnot come into play, we think that that may be still a bit aggressive, but we can use it for one year. And then, uh, there's been some tree protection bylaw, uh, enhancements that have been discussed. Uh, we're suggesting that, uh, a deferral of one year on those because as the COVID environment might be appropriate, and again, it might not. It might be something that's of a policy priority for council, in which case we're certainly willing to to consider that. And then there's the use of surplus funds. Uh, we've used a modest amount, uh, to bring the overall picture into, to balance at that four point one four level. Again, uh, something that's in the package, but it's really helps us going forward to try to further refine it, to look at the, the options that we have. We can certainly discuss these in more detail, but the areas we wish to focus. And I think one of the things that we, we have not really focused on yet because we weren't sure of the appetite was, again, looking at borrowing for some of the capital projects. It's a, it's a very difficult subject because of course we don't take borrowing lightly. It does have some longer-term costs associated with it, but is that something that's appropriate in the COVID year, given the fact that, uh, we are looking at historically, uh, very low rates of interest, uh, for some of the projects we're considering. So it is something that is, is an option for us. Uh, but again, it has to meet that policy test and that's where council's guidance is so helpful. Sandra, I kinda, kinda skipped through that, but did you have any comments on either this slide, slide two or slide three?
Um, no, uh, we, staff does continue to look at, uh, at other options for deferrals, but this is sort of where we've landed at this point.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Counsel Arneson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to direct a couple of questions. Um, one for, could we go back to the, um, the second slide that, I guess it's number three here? To look at, uh, the things that we are considering deferring. Oh, there it is. Okay, thank you. Um, so just for a question of clarification, so I think I understand number one, move library expenses to the library levy. So just, uh, to clarify, that means that we have decided to take that as a separate line item and make it on the budget so that everybody understands the totality of the cost for our library system as part of the F A R L. Would that be correct?
Your worship, that's, uh, effectively correct. Um, this is nothing new. Uh, this is simply taking our costs and allocating them into the categories we have on the tax statement, and we have a resolution of council confirming same, and that's why we, uh, we included that as one of the adjusting entries.
Okay, perfect. And that makes sense. Um, the other question I had, I guess, is with the potential, I know that this is something that's been cast as a potential way to defer some of the costs, but, um, the deferring of the tree protection bylaw service enhancements, you know, at this point, I would personally take that off the table, but that's just because I think that the task force itself has made a recommendation and it's a bit premature, uh, in this process to look at that as something to operationalize because, um, I, I, I do think it was a clearly defined need, and I think that, you know, from my point of view, it's something that we've delayed for a long time in terms of a tree bylaw. And if that is a cost consequence of making sure that our bylaw is enforced, uh, then I think that we have to, uh, look at that as something that we want to do as soon as possible because it could be further implications, for example, with the secondary part of the task force process, which is to look at a tree canopy policy, and those, to me, are very integral to each other. So I think it would be a bit, uh, premature at this point to look into those. So those are just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I noted, uh, Counselor Whitmarsh.
There, thank you. Worship, uh, just a couple of questions on, uh, slide three, uh, that we're looking at right now. I know it's not a large item, uh, in terms of s- savings, but in number three, it says moves from two point six eight with no particular basis. I'm not I'm not really sure what that means, um, to move, change from two point six eight to two point three five with no basis. Maybe as your staff, uh, Mr. Backen, maybe you could just help me with that.
No, thank you, your worship. That's, that's actually my language because I'm, I'm putting a bit of a, a, a warning. Um, the, the rationale for the adjustment is some very crude projections we can make based on many assumptions. The assumptions are gonna be the time it takes to return to normal, whatever that is. And of course, if normal occurs on June first, uh, versus September first, uh, versus December first, it's quite significant in terms of the drivers that, uh, we're, we're seeing the costs that are increasing or the, the loss of revenue. Uh, the problem is with those projections, um, they don't have any really particular basis at this point. Uh, we, we are listening to the news stories about when vaccines may be present. We're watching what's happening in other jurisdictions. But we are trying to highlight that we really don't have any, any, uh, concrete fundamental, uh, thing we can point to to say what we think is gonna happen because of it. It's more of a, a judgment call that, that we think that's the case, and if we're, uh, incorrect, the, the difference that we're talking about, which is the difference between two point six eight and two point three five is something that we could probably still overcome with built into the budget, but as time evolves, we're seeing, hoping perhaps is a better term, perhaps not seeing, but hoping that we can, uh, we can actually achieve these numbers, again, subject to the ability to very closely manage our facilities and to try to take advantage of those windows where there may be positive revenues versus, uh, uh, what, what we quite often see is a negative revenues, or if in effect, trying to capitalize on the positive revenues and, and limit our, our experience to negative revenues. Keeping in mind though, that we, we do wanna deliver services and we also wanna keep in mind that we do have programs for those that are hard hit that they, they can certainly take advantage of some of the, the programs that are there for those that are in need. Um, but again, trying to do that in the context of, of, well, not just one facilities, but effectively three facilities.
Okay, so the, the, the two point six eight is the, is the, is the recreation increase due to COVID?
No.
Is that kinda what that two point six eight is? And so we're thinking it could be two point three five, uh, if things go more favorable?
Right, the, the two component was really the, uh, but going back to the first slide, which you don't need to flashback to, but we've looked at the recreation center increases in terms of, um, uh, cost going, uh, up, if you will, and, and, uh, then we have the second one of really the loss of revenue in terms of can we enhance the revenue. So as the mayor mentioned, those are coming in at, uh, almost close to four percent, uh, which is significant. Uh, the combination of those, we're, we're fine tuning as we've heard the comments that, well, the numbers were pretty broadly based before. Can we refine them? And we're trying to refine them, but, uh, there's not a lot of science we can say in terms of when we expect COVID to be over or how long it will take to ramp. There's not a lot of science we can say in terms of when we expect COVID to be over or how long it will take to ramp back up to a normal revenue situation once COVID is in fact over.
Right, okay. Um, I have a second question. Uh, uh, Mr. Back and um is. The reduce RCMP request of two members rather than three. Um, this uh, the three members was part of our original decision to enhance RCMP by a total of ten. Um, and so if we if we reduce to two, is this is this suggestion here that we would slow down the? The the how long it takes us to get to ten? Or would or is there sort of an idea that we would do this for one year, but then we would try to make that up? Um, quickly in in a subsequent year. Um, is your, you know, is staff thinking, uh, what staff's thinking behind? How we would get to the ten or are we, is there a suggestion that maybe we don't do ten or what? How is that working?
So Sandra, you'll probably have to help me on this, but my recollection is that I think we're committed to the ten. It was simply a matter of annualization and the time which they arrive. Uh, so the ten were, if you will, loosely scheduled for uh twenty twenty. Uh, they won't all have arrived by then and that's probably ongoing challenges, but each year we requisition additional RCMP. Our tradition has been to requisition about three uh per year. And we're saying, well, given the fact we've requisitioned ten in twenty twenty. Perhaps in twenty twenty one, it's appropriate to reduce that by one to take us down to uh to two. It also gives us a chance to look at a bit incrementally the the associated costs, at least on a on a on a. October to December basis, uh, if we wanted to go down and perhaps even reduce it further or perhaps even increase it, I suppose is the other way of looking at it. If we wanted to increase that commitment. But Sandra, have I got the uh the numbers quite uh numbers correct then on the timing of the ten?
Yes, you do.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, thank you. That's good for me.
Thank you. Uh, Council Davis, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Just a a quick comment. I I know I I it's I don't want to be. Um, the Edmonton referral or to compare to me doesn't um. I don't know, there's a million in nine hundred and eighty one thousand people there, thirteen. Uh, one 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 million, three hundred in the bedroom communities. I I just wonder um. If Edmonton isn't always, if I don't think Edmonton would be such a good comparison. Uh, they're on the other side of the Rockies. Everything's cheaper uh in the Wild West. I just would wonder, they have different climate there. Everything's a little different. But I maybe I'm not understanding the actual what actually you're looking at in that. Um, but but they have a couple, number three, this question's been answered, move the two point eight zero with no particular basis. I I did head mark that and I've got an answer to that. Thank you. The uh two quick questions, reduce CPO lease. Um, Mr. Backham, I heard you and I kinda kinda lost you and. I- i- is that going to reduce the lease to the size of the building? How will that affect? The will that affect us in two, you know, is that going to affect us in two or three years? The other question is, and I'll leave it with you and listen, is increased building permit revenue. Um, it's up to three hundred thousand. Uh, that's that's won't be taken too lightly, but I'm just wondering how will that look? How will that happen? Where will that come from? Will it, will we have, will be one less person? On the counter, will it be the actual fee of the building permit? Um, you know, where what will it target? Well, you know, anyhow, I'm I'm just, maybe you know a little bit more about that.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I'll uh, I'll start, I guess, in reverse order. Um. What we're actually experiencing in building permits is a significant um increase in volume. So the staff are producing or or. Processing more and more. And to be fair, as Mr. Seffy has pointed out in several occasions, we don't have much more capacity to utilize. Uh, they're working very hard in the that area. And I think if uh Mr. Seffy actually had some photos showing the recent activity before the year end. Where we literally have uh building application files, not development, but building, actual building application files. Uh, not only in filing cabinets, but on top of filing cabinets, around filing cabinets, almost hanging from the from the ceiling. So. Uh, we're uh, we're we're seeing um those sorts of numbers now. Those numbers are driven a little bit by the fact that there are some um. Councilor Ferguson, you may want to be aware that your writing is appearing on everyone's screen. Uh, so it's it's a bit of a distraction.
He felt Edmonton wrong.
I and I seen him moving around. Okay.
Uh, so the 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 fact that we're seeing is we think that that revenue because of some of the deadlines we're seeing in uh. DCC changes would still be strong in twenty twenty one. Uh, it will not necessarily be there in twenty twenty two because then we're getting into, well, what's the economy going to look like in twenty twenty two? And that again becomes a bit of a guessing game. So with with that, it's not about uh having less people. It's about trying to. Keep the people we have and uh and ask a little bit more from them. And and Mr. Seffy would say there's not much more to ask because it's quite busy down there. Um, the second component then going backwards in no particular order, I guess I'll put it that way. Is the CPO. Um, the CPO, we were allowed to drill down further and look at some of the options in terms of. What our base rent was and what the um, the triple net costs were going to be or the common area costs were going to be. And we were able to look at that in terms of what that was going to be for the from a roughly half year opening or a two uh one thirty year opening and. Try to come up with a number that would be more realistic. So in doing so, we've been able to actually take the original number we had and reduce it by about two hundred and twenty five thousand. It doesn't reduce the square footage. Um, at this point, we're always fine tuning it. I think that's what I was probably alluding to. Uh, but we're still looking at a facility in the eight to ten thousand square foot range and we're looking at other, you know, continuing to look at options in terms of trying to shrink that. Or are there more affordable ways to do it? Uh, we're still trying to do that. Mr. Tullamello has got that on his portfolio and is working quite quite hard on that. And as to the to the CPI, uh, as you've referenced, uh, ideally, the consumer price index is nationwide. Um, and what the work that Alberta is trying to do is they're trying to replicate a municipal price index that is uh trying to be nationwide, but they're. They're of course focusing on the Alberta numbers. And as you pointed out, Councilor Davis, the. The challenge is their costs can be a little bit different, but they they also tend to be a little bit less than ours because of the tax regime and some of the. The cascading effect of the land costs that we're seeing. So so uh, it's not intended to indicate that that's going to be our number. It's really trying to indicate two things. Number one, that uh it looks like that there is a difference and it can be. I guess uh academically uh demonstrated, uh, is that the right number? That's a different point. And if anything, as you pointed out, the cost increases are likely to be higher here, which again puts a bigger challenge for us. But it's trying to demonstrate that we are, while we're consumers, we're not the average retail consumer. It's almost a. A business price index or an industrial price index. It's uh got a much different bushel or basket of goods.
Okay, thank you very much.
You, Council Richter.
Thank you. I wasn't expecting to come up this quickly. Um, I wanted to go back. I've got some questions on this page and I want to go back to page. One as well. Uh, first of all, Mr. Back and mentioned borrowing for capital projects. Uh, what kind of borrowing dollars are you looking at this time around? What, how much?
Uh, we haven't actually identified it particularly because we haven't finished as a group or or look at the capital program, but. I think it would be fairly easy to to come up with a package of a a couple of packages of say, uh, three, five. Or 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 ten million dollars as being a potential borrowing. Um, we haven't isolated it yet because we weren't certain if the if council wanted to entertain that, given our our uh our borrowing in the past few seasons. Uh, that was primarily land acquisition based as opposed to some of the the actual capital projects.
Okay, so you're looking at about ten million there. All right. Not that I approve of additional borrowing, but. Nice to know that that's what we're looking at. Okay, the CPO lease here, which CPO are we referring to?
It's Willoughby.
The Willoughby CPO, okay. That's interesting. And they'll let us reduce the lease?
It's based on our calculations in terms of uh half year versus full year versus quarter year. And better numbers now refined to to actually remove some of the ambiguity as to the triple net costs. We have some more solid numbers on the triple net costs that they're looking at. So the combined effect of that is to provide us with a a reduction for twenty twenty one.
Okay, now the tree protection um service by law service enhancements. Uh, Councilor Arnison referred to those earlier and I tend to agree with her from the perspective of, I think if we defer these. It's going to be a bit of a slap in the face to that committee. Because this is the first recommendation that they sent to us. But having said that. I didn't get the impression from the last committee meeting where they approved it, that this was something the committee actually wanted. It was something staff asked the committee to support. So now the third question that I know that was just a comment, the third question. Um, revenue from Blair. Now Blair's been reopened for what, a month now, month and a half? How much, how much money are we getting in uh revenue wise from Blair relative to costs?
Uh, Mr. Stare, I think you probably are the person that's had the most recent look at that. I remember seeing a bit of a table that showed some of the revenues that were. Uh, good, but probably not close to covering our costs. Do you have any any comments?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Backing. I'd have to go back and dig specifically for that one. I know um, there was uh. Numbers provided to the end of twenty twenty um in previous reports um to council. Um, I just don't have that in front of me at this moment.
Yeah, what I meant, what I'm interested in seeing are the actual monies that have come in, like is the pool being used now that it's reopened? As uh robustly as we had hoped it would be used. And hand in hand with that, of course, goes along with the 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 next question, which would be. If we're not seeing robust use of Blair, should we be reconsidering reopening Walnut Grove? Because if there's not going to be the usage there, we shouldn't be reopening it, not this year, not with the cost picture the way it is. So yes, I would appreciate getting uh additional details on the actual uh dollars. Now I'd like to go back to page one, which is your overview. And if we add the last two items together, so the one time grant plus the balance that's left. We're actually looking at a nine point six one percent increase in our budget because. There's no guarantees that this grant money is going to be forthcoming again this year. Or is there? Do we have any assurances from the provincial government that we're going to get another grant?
So, so your worship, that's a good point to to clarify. The five point four seven is the one time grant that they referenced in October, November. As we referenced, we we think, we're pretty confident that we'd be able to balance the twenty twenty budget without going into deficit, which without means that money be used for. But the nature of the money was to actually utilize it for uh cost recovery, not just over um one year, but over the whole COVID experience. So. This money we do have, but you're quite correct. We don't have it for twenty twenty two, but we're just focusing on the twenty twenty one budget at this time.
Okay, so if we went ahead with this budget as presented right now, we're really looking at a nine point six one percent increase, which is the five point four seven. Plus the four point one four. A nine percent increase in a budget in a COVID year, first of all, in my opinion, is not sustainable. Second of all, if we do do this, and that's carrying over to next year's budget with almost a ten percent increase. And I don't see how we can justify that. So going back up to your top number here, your six point seven one percent, it seems to me that this number has to be dramatically reduced. And I don't know how you're going to get to that, but. I almost think this is the year where we need to say to staff. We can't do anymore than actually personally, I don't think we should be having any tax increase at all. But given that there is a a a cost of living increase that that does exist, no more than that cost of living increase. So I don't know why we just don't ask staff at this point. To go back to the drawing board and bring the number down so the bottom line here is no more than cost of living. And I also think that we should take the one time grant out because we're not going to get it next year. So the bottom line should be cost of living without that grant. Can that be done?
And you worship, it's a good starting point because the six point seven one was actually higher. And unfortunately. Why that number was higher was because of some of the service enhancements uh that were undertaken. Uh, for example, the ten police officers. That were committed to uh those uh those ten in the two thousand twenty uh year. Uh, was a very much much smaller of a number because we were budgeting for three months of the year. And now we're budgeting for the full year. So we're seeing the annualizations come in. Uh, we're also seeing some of the uh the other impacts in other areas where we uh. Where we deferred some of the impact on the tax rate by utilizing surplus or reserves, which was a a good and prudent transition move. Uh, and probably uh worked quite well, but for the fact we then experienced the COVID situation where in this year. Uh, we're seeing some of the numbers, uh, the cost drivers. Again, it's cost drivers or loss of revenue. By uh by operationalizing the the recreation centers again, uh, which of course is certainly the right thing to do because of the fact uh. The pools are 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 quite well, quite needed. But we're looking at a bit of a a challenge in terms of a bump in terms of the the. The mix of the timing for which we increased our service levels to. Uh, some of the costs from COVID, which again, we're now trying to plan coming out of the COVID environment to see some of those costs go down and revenues go back up. But if council wished to provide, um, you know, some direction in terms of what was suggested. Uh, that would be fine. But again, where we would look at is is automatically back to deferring. Uh, any increases I think that we're looking at in service levels. We'd be trying to undo those or put them back. So. Quite happy to do so, but it's a, it's probably something that's a bit more complex than that because it's just the environment that the we're operating within.
Okay, but uh all I'm saying is we don't have a full appreciation, I don't think, of the household impact out there. Right now on people from dealing with COVID, uh, loss of work over COVID. Um, um. You know, whether or not jobs are going to come back under COVID or under the recovery. And I just think it's it's very, very unfair to be asking the public to uh foot the bill. For what is in effect, uh, uh, almost a ten percent increase in our annual budget here. It's just not right. The other thing is like, does this balance, this four point one four percent include the the uh capital as well? Or is that still another part of the equation that will be coming into play?
Well, that does include our contribution to capital from our previous discussion. So it's remaining at the approximate eight million dollar level uh in terms of our contribution. So. We're trying to maintain those in accordance with the previous directions and policies of council. Uh, and the other component is you're you're, I think you're quite correct in terms of the impact. That's why we're seeing. Other communities uh tried to come in at, well, I think City of Vancouver had the most difficult challenge about ending up at five or six percent and. Our neighbors in Surrey were able to get down to about four percent, but of course they took their infrastructure levy from one hundred dollars per. Uh, parcel to three hundred dollars per parcel. So it is certainly going to be of a a challenging year for all going forward.
Yeah, okay. Well, um, Mr. Mayor, um, if we need a motion, I'd be willing to put a motion forward. Not at this point because I appreciate there's still more discussion to occur. Uh, that we just basically asked staff to bring it in at at cost of living period for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think today is more of an overview and for receipt. We'll have more discussions, especially uh in in light of the workshop for next week. So this is really a. Chance for us to absorb what staff have done at this point and then then coming back. Thank you. Council Kuntz. Council Kuntz, I don't know if you're muted or.
There you go. Um, on slide two, no, not slide two, on uh number one there where we talk about the um police officers. Where's that one? Yeah, there on number three. Um, the forty four thousand, it seems like that seems like a low number. If we're eliminating one police officer, is that just the the cost of the police officer or? Um, yeah, what what would be the, is that the?
That represents effectively the cost of one police officer for three months, October, November, December.
Okay.
Uh, so because they, when we requisition them, they they don't arrive um much before October.
Okay, that's why that numbers. And then also for the tree protection by law, is that those are. That the senior level by law person as well as a junior, is that right? Is that two people?
Uh, it's an it's an arborist and a support person. And and there's a good comment, um, right now staff um. Don't have the resources to uh to, I guess, they meet the the, what we feel the needs are of the council or the committee in terms of enha- enacting the tree protection. Initiative. So it's 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 really about a service enhancement to meet the policy framework we put place and put in place. Uh, our concern is without uh without uh doing that, um, again, uh, it would be very difficult to. Meet the expectations of council and the committee, as was referenced. So the suggestion was inherent in the deferral is if we're going to go down that path, we're really going to be in. For uh deferring, I guess, implementing. we're really going to be in for, uh, deferring, I guess, implementation of that as well. And that may not be, as we've heard, that's something that's already getting some red flags. So we take that quite seriously and, and think that is probably something that has to be maintained, uh, as we try to go forward. But of course, trying to maintain it and trying to actually bring our numbers down is, is a bit of cross purposes. I mean, we're, we're in one hand, expanding a service, on the other hand, we're trying to reduce our costs. And it would be, that's always the ongoing challenge in all these budget cycles because we're trying to, to maintain our services, not add new ones at the cost levels, even though the cost drivers are going up, uh, two, three percent per year. It, it's a, uh, certainly a challenge, particularly this year.
I mean, could this be something that is, you know, say, um, scheduled for September or something like that? But, you know, for that number, you know, we, we know that we're committed to it, but maybe not just, you know, for the whole number. Just as we don't want to have a huge increase in taxes. I mean, I don't want to have our, our taxpayers overburdened as well. But then we also have to decide what it is that we want to, um, include in this budget. So just trying to find the balance.
No, we, we certainly could, it just is going to mean, uh, uh, perhaps a delay in some of the service levels we'd like to see in that regard. Uh, having said that, of course, we're already in January and, uh, of course, uh, we're, the, the hiring process itself takes some time and we generally do not hire until we have a budget in place as well. So we can certainly even look at that as being a, a half-year number, which is really a deferral from our, our second slide. We could defer, uh, that only for say, six months. Uh, and that's probably more realistic because of the fact that we are probably going to take us about the first six months to get through the budget process and the hiring process to fill those positions.
Thank you, Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, hello, thank you very much. Can you hear me? Okay, you can hear me, okay. Thank you very much. I did want to say, obviously, we've heard the word enough times, uh, it's a COVID budget for this year. Uh, there, we're, we're looking at, uh, uh, all the deferments, reductions and surpluses that we have to look at. Um, I, I wanted to ask the use of surplus to fund cap, contribution to capital, that's four seventy-five, uh, thousand in the, in the red. Can I ask a quick question on that one to start off?
Yeah, yes, go ahead, you have the floor, yes.
Okay, and Mr. Backen, can you answer that? The use of surplus to fund ca- contribution to capital?
Sure, um, as I mentioned, um, our, our budget focuses on an eight million dollar contribution to capital without coming from operating revenues or from general revenues. What that number reflects is we're really not doing that, we're really saying seven point five, seven point five two five is coming from operating revenues and the four seventy-five we're simply using from surplus and reserves to bring us to that, maintaining that level. So effectively, we're, we're kind of slowing down our, our, our rate of increase. Um, and it's intended to just give us a bit of, uh, latitude in terms of coming to that balancing number that we've achieved so far of the four point one four, which again is, I just, I caution, it's still a bit of a work in progress.
Now, my other questions, if I may, and I, I, I'll, I'll use other communities as examples. I know, I think it was Port Coquitlam last year that said that they were going to have a zero increase in taxes. But what it really transferred to was a zero increase in only one general taxes. There were still taxes for Metro Vancouver, there are still taxes for their, their services, still taxes for their water and other things. Uh, that's still the case even with us, we can't have a zero percent increase in taxes. And no matter what we say or do at the council, is that not true, Mr. Backen?
Uh, I think you're on the right track. We, we can't say that our, our revenue needs are not going to increase because of the, the, the price index and the drivers that are out there. What we do see in some communities is, is really threefold. They would look at, um, perhaps changing their overhead charge rates to their utilities. They charge more, uh, for the, the management of those utilities and that provides them with some revenue. They, um, may use, uh, uh, levies, as we've seen some other communities do. Um, and quite often, depending upon their debt cycle, uh, if you actually have built into your budget, say, a payment of debt of a million dollars a year, if you actually are able to retire that debt, if you actually conclude that repayment program, that gives you more ba- more flexibility in your operating budget. We're not, um, in a position where we see anything meaningful coming up in the next little while. But a community that say, um, had retired a million or two million dollars in, in their annual debt would then have the latitude to say, we're going to reduce our taxes and/or absorb those increases that are otherwise occurring without having to affect their general revenue. And that may have been what's occurred. In that circumstance, I'm not sure, but that's what we've seen of the communities sometimes do.
And I think it's important to note as we go through this process, and Mr. Mayor, you mentioned it is, uh, a discussion area. I'm not, uh, hopefully, I'm not expecting too many motions today. But, uh, we need to drill down and find, uh, the best we can. But we also have to take into consideration other communities which have already raised their taxes in a, in a, um, I guess, a differential between whatever community it is. Uh, whether it's within the Metro Vancouver region or the Fraser Valley Regional District, um, I don't think we need to go past there other than, uh, just study what other people have done in other areas throughout the province. Um, I think that those things are important to note, uh, rather than, um, having a Langley only, although we have a Langley only, we always have had, but it's important to compare. We would, last thing we have done, and I've, other communities have done it as well, especially communities that have the, uh, the past, and not so much now, uh, casino revenues. And those casino revenues are sometimes, as, um, other communities, I always like to use Burnaby, have been put into reserves and when they're in trouble, uh, they can easily, uh, draw on those reserves for, um, many of their services. Uh, so some folks are, because of those type of revenues, casino and other, are able to generate those type of, uh, of, of, uh, solutions to problems, especially COVID budget problems. So, uh, I, I always look at comparisons, I always look at what we can do. I always look at preparing for the future because we have to be prudent, we have to watch what we do this year, but we have to also be careful in our percentage. Thank you.
Your Worship, just to pick up on that, uh, some very good points were raised. Well, Sandra will, um, and Sam and myself will make a point of recirculating some of the earlier documents where we saw what some of our cost driver carryovers were from two thousand and twenty. Uh, and I use the example of the RCMP, but there's other cost drivers, uh, that we had, uh, to absorb going forward. And it's just unfortunate, it's, it's conflicted with this, this COVID year. So it's, uh, I, I think it's actually magnifying the challenge.
Thank you for that. And I think what you're referring to, we deferred last, uh, budget as a COVID budget, and this COVID pandemic is stretching on. And so we're, you know, we're having to continually adapt. And we did attempt, I think, last, um, budget to reduce the impact on the household. Yet, there's a time that has to come to rest and we have to, uh, adjust for it. And you can't keep deferring, but those are good points and, and, uh, for, for the discussion. Uh, Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, just, um, I have a question with regards back to the RCMP. Um, just so that I understand, it's maybe just for my clarity. Uh, twenty, twenty twenty, uh, budget, we approved the ten new officers. And have those, have those ten new officers, they, have they been hired? Or we're in the process of hiring them? Wh- where are we at with those ten?
Your Worship, the, the best way to, I guess, conceptualize it is in twenty twenty, we committed to acquire, uh, ten officers. I'm going to use a round number that's not accurate. We know each officer is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that's not quite accurate because there's costs, there's direct costs of salaries, and then there's pensions and equipment and all those sorts of things. But if we use the one fifty as the illustration, we multiply that by ten, uh, that becomes our, our budget impact. So in my example, then, that would be, uh, um, a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, times ten is going to give you the number of our impact of our overall budget. Why we did not, uh, see that occur in, in, uh, twenty twenty was we only allocated effectively, uh, for, uh, one-third of the year, uh, so, no, one-quarter of the year for October, November and December. And in addition, we used the RCMP reserve, surplus if you will, to buy that impact down a little bit. So we've created that precedent to buy that down, uh, so we lowered our overall costs. So those numbers, those, uh, members have been ordered, um, but because of depot issues in terms of COVID and training, they have not all yet arrived. Uh, the best way to say it is that they're, they're in process either from a manufacturer, meaning they were being hired and put through depot, and then once they're through depot, they're delivered to us. And, uh, that takes a bit of time. Um, their projection for achieving all of that will probably be, subject to COVID, probably the first, uh, first or second quarter of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and that's one of the reasons why we have the option of perhaps delaying our traditional incremental increase of three. So that impact then means they're on their way. Could we undo some of those if we wanted to? Um, there's always ways of, of doing that by not filling vacancies, but it's, uh, that's a bit of a policy shift. The other intervening factor in that is going to be the impact of Surrey. Uh, Surrey, with their municipal police force coming online, will undoubtedly look to RCMP members to make the transition. But there'll be a number that won't. And, uh, once that is firmed up, um, it's quite likely that there will be redistribution of some of those Surrey RCMP members to other member communities that are, are waiting with the backlog. So again, the timing of that could impact when, uh, we get to the full complement.
A point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, what's your point of order?
My point of order, I just want, I'm just looking at the time, uh, have you got a, uh, schedule, what time will end this meeting? Thank you.
Well, we're, just want to finish off with the Counselor Whitmarsh. I don't see any of the speakers. I think this meeting is very close to an end. There are no motions at this point, it's more of a information meeting, so. Counselor Whitmarsh, were you complete?
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess just, um, you know, where, where I'm thinking, and I recognize it's a policy adjustment, but, you know, if we, if we haven't filled the ten spots, uh, and, I mean, I don't know how it works in terms of whether we've committed to individuals to come or not. But, you know, I, I don't know if there's a way to, for one year, maybe we don't have ten, maybe we have seven, uh, come and then we add those three later, but it seems like we're doing ten. And then we're now talking about adding another two in the budget. So really, um, is that twelve over two-year period? And, um, I guess I just think that maybe there's some room there. And I recognize it's a policy adjustment, well, no one expected a hun- once every hundred-year pandemic either. So maybe we should, we could look at that RCMP area, uh, for a one-year policy. The adjustment from the policy for one year to try and save. But I mean, if they're committed and we've already basically told each of them that they're coming and, you know, they've got contracts, that's a different thing. But if it's just that we've indicated the RCMP that we'd like to have ten and they maybe hired seven of them, but there's three left, left to still hire and they haven't done it yet, maybe there's room. I don't, I don't really know, but COVID's a very unusual year. So looking at something in a very unusual way might be the thing that we need to do, so. Uh, I'm not sure, but anyway, it was just a question to ask if there's some room there to make some adjustment, uh, more than what's suggested on this slide three.
I think, uh, and staff will, uh, bring that back to us. Thanks, a good, good point. Uh, Mr. Backen's making notes. Counselor Richter.
Yes, just to pick up on Counselor Whitmarsh's comments about, um, taking advantage of this year to look at things differently, uh, it would seem to me that, um, the approach of looking at playing catch-up is not the approach we should be taking. We should be taking this year as an opportunity, I think, to go back and revisit all the base services that we have right now and change the ones that are no longer needed because they're, they're not absolutely essential. And maybe that's what we should be focusing on, like, what is, what are the absolute required services that we are mandated and legislated to provide? Uh, what are the costs of those services? And can we provide those services with less than a nine point six one percent tax increase? Which is basically what this budget is if you include the one time. So, um, I, I think there's an opportunity here for us to look at the picture from, through a different lens and, and use this to, uh, uh, readjust our expectations and our service deliveries. So I would like to put a motion forward that we ask staff to, uh, uh, take the comments away and come back to us with a cost of living budget that does not include the five point four seven percent grant because we can't count on that going forward. So that would be my motion.
Yeah, I, well, it, that's a, just want to speak to that motion. Uh, the staff have been taking notes, that's the whole purpose of this meeting. I think the comments that you've made, um, certainly have been, uh, jotted down and, and we'll be coming back with that. So there really is no requirement for motion, this is the whole purpose of this, of this. So it will be coming back, we have the workshop next week. And, uh, I think, uh, some of the comments that made by yourself, Counselor Whitmarsh and others about, um, looking at it a little bit, with a little bit different lens. I, I think, uh, staff certainly have been working hard to get us to this point. And, um, that five point four seven isn't going to, you know, it's a one, it's a grant, it's, it's, we know that. Certainly is there to help us through this COVID time and, and we know it's not coming back. But staff have definitely made a note of that and will be coming back. Is that correct, Mr. Backen? So I, I don't think we require a motion, this is what, this is what.
That's correct, Your Worship, there was two comments on that, I think. Number one, I think it'd be helpful to go through the priority session because we may be looking at a priority session where the priority is not to go and build something, but it may be quite the opposite, it may be to, uh, uh, reduce or eliminate something, and I use that as a general term. And the second one is, part of the, the challenge we have is we have to be mindful that some of the challenges we face, I think, are from our commitments from two thousand and twenty. And that was certainly a different time, but undoing those commitments, um, from twenty twenty, and the police is the classic example, as Counselor Whitmarsh picked up upon, uh, needs a bit of further thought. Certainly can be looked into, but that may be something that flows from the priority session that, uh, maybe the priority, uh, is to revisit our, our previous commitments and reduce them. I'm doing that on the fly here. So I think it'd be very, it's a very wise motion, but might be better suited after we get through the priority session.
Okay, well, if we're going to go into that priority session, could we please go in with the option of a cost of living budget? Less the five point four seven million grant, which we can't count on going forward, as a base budget for this year. Uh, because I just don't, I don't want that, I, I don't want that taken from the table. And I, I think that, uh, you know, there are ways we could do things differently. For example, looking at this, uh, brand-new bells and whistles CPO that's going into Willoughby, which is really going to end up being a substation. Uh, is this a time for us to divest ourselves of other CPOs and just focus in on the substation approach? That would be one question that could be asked. So, um, I think these are the questions that we need to be focusing on. How do we do diff- business differently and still, um, maintain our legislated requirements and our legislated duties and responsibilities? I, I think we can do this. Uh, it's just not, it's just not going to get done approaching this budget in the budget as normal, uh, manner. Because that's not going to work, that just means we keep adding costs every year, every year, every year, and we have to keep rolling them forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, it's been a great discussion, staff have, um, taken notes and we do have the workshop coming up and, and the meetings, but we are working our way through it. So, uh, it's, uh, twelve twenty-five, I'd ask for a motion to terminate.
Termination.
Counselor Davis, second by Counselor Whitmarsh, all those in favor? Any opposed? And Carrie, thank you.
Are we still back?
Meeting on the same channel at one o'clock, Your Worship?
One o'clock, yes, same, same place.
Same channel, okay.
Okay.